You were puzzled. Bang the gavel, please. Poor Everett. Bang the gavel, but we'll take it. The Finance Committee meeting in order for Monday, November 4th, 2019. The only legislation on tonight's agenda is Resolution 140-19. That is the city budget. And we received some information from Mayor Scheffler this morning, or yesterday, or something over the weekend. I don't, we have a budget, but we don't have a completely, we don't have all the compares to that budget. We're expecting that, well, America can tell us when he's going to send that to us. He also included some information about the police and fire departments, since they consume about 70% of the general fund. And then I also passed out kind of a revenue budget comparing 2020 to 2019. I did not do, I didn't do a compare on the amounts, but I did print the general fund revenue, so you could at least see that on that wonderful eye chart, which is 11 by 17. So you have a lot of information in your hand, and then you have three weeks in which to digest it. And then we can have, I assume we'll get a complete budget, probably a few updates, compares between this year and last year at the next meeting as we take that through second reading. Mayor Scheffler, I'll turn it over to you if you want to go ahead and give us some commentary and just make sure we can answer any questions that anybody might have.
Okay, so the budget was prepared with no cost of living increases for management and non-union salaries. Obviously, on the union side, we have contracted amounts that we have to include for the five unions that serve the city. The overall budget is about $6 million less than last year's budget. The general fund budget is up, is 21.96 million. It's up 1.65 million, of which 1.3 million is police and fire. And I did enclose in the email I sent Saturday afternoon the details on those budgets for you to look at. We will have updates. We're still getting some new funds in that need to be added to the budget. And we're doing it one more time this year in the Excel spreadsheet format, which we didn't think we were going to have to do last year. So it's been quite a hassle with my assistant, who's doing it for the first time. So we're getting there.
Okay, so once you have it complete, you'll provide it in Excel format?
Yes, yes.
And create our pivot tables?
We've made great progress in getting prior year's information in today.
Okay. And then a couple of things. The pay ordinance will all be introduced next meeting.
Correct.
And then you'll provide a summary of any changes, specific adds, changes, or deletes in positions, like we did last year, so we can have a discussion. And the sooner you get that out in email form, the better. So certainly, you don't have to wait until, you know, obviously it'd be introduced in three weeks. But if we can, the sooner you can get that information out, we can at least start digesting it and asking questions and those types of things.
Right.
And then Trish, you want to talk real quick about how you've kind of restructured Fund 101 to include police and fire?
Yeah.
How that's going to look different?
It's going to look different because we've kind of broken police into two cost centers. Volga is going to be general fund, and the small portion for theirs will be on the Fund 247, just what monies comes in from income tax only. And fire will have three cost centers. General fund, the income tax portion for the .45 and the .15 fire levies. So that way, once general fund, the monies they've got budgeted in general fund, will stay in general fund. So basically, any changes, if they do any changes throughout the year, it'll come out of the general fund portion, the increase and decrease, and the cash then, or the unused budget then stays in general fund. So we've kind of broken them out. So general fund's cash stays in general fund, and they're just spending down the income tax monies and the other funds.
Okay. So those are the two handouts that you have. If you can, if you look at that, you can see the 2020 budget is in the gold color. And it basically, it looks like everything adds from left to right. And we'll get you the grand totals, I believe.
So I would add that we experienced a huge increase in health insurance premiums for 2020 as a result of some very bad experience with our employees and dependents over the last year and a half or so. We pay in, we paid in about $600,000 a month in premiums. In January alone, we had over $1 million in claims. And that's kind of been what's been happening lately. It seems to be trending better here of late, but we're still significantly below the reserves that we're required to have in the insurance pool. So a huge increase passing through, about $1 million hits this budget in 2020 for health insurance increases.
Does this, does that increase put the pool, the reserve pool, back to where it needs to be, or does that?
It's going to be a long-term fix. We are, we spent a lot of time, and Gretchen Meijer, our HR person, Paul and I have spent a lot of time talking to other potential carriers, looking at different plans. We are limited as to what we can do by our union contracts, how much we can pass through, what plan changes we can make. So we are working on a longer-term solution, but we're locked into our current contract until July, or until June 30th. There's approximately a $3 million penalty, one-time fee penalty, if we opt out of the existing program before June 30th, when the contract dates.
Well, let's don't do that. That'd be a bad idea.
It is a bad idea. We've already determined that.
Okay. All right. Questions for the administration specific to the budget? Mrs. Bobbitt?
Just off the top of your head. You know, you said no cost of living for management, but you put the percentages in that's covered under the unions.
Yes, the union, right. The union, the contracted.
Do you remember what those percentages are? I know once I got a-
Roughly 2% for this year.
2%. Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Hall?
This is a small issue, and it's not a lot of money. But looking at the budget revenues, the property tax estimates are going down, and it looks like we're not going to meet the 2019 budget. And what factors would account for our property taxes revenues going down with the growth that we're seeing?
In the, when you look at the 2019 estimate itself, the tax budget estimate I put in what was on the Schedule A with the county auditor, these are all driven by the county auditor. And when I put the total in there on the tax budget in 19, the county auditor got ahold of me and said that they wanted it split out between tax, the property tax, and if you go down on the homestead rollback. So there, on that one, you, they wanted, they started having me split out those estimates that way. And those all stem from the county auditor's office on the Schedule A form. That comes through council that we passed via legislation. So those are numbers directly from the county auditor's office in their estimates.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Further questions? All right. Seeing none. I'm certain that as documents become available, the administration will send them off to council. And then as we get an Excel budget, or I'm sorry, a budget in Excel format, we'll send that out to council as well. We will go forth through three full readings. And Mr. McDaniel, you please second that?
Yes.
All right. Are there any departmental updates this evening? Well, okay.
I was going to do a horse shack, but I did not.
I didn't see.
I wanted to ask, when you go to put it out to give it to us, can it be posted on the city's website if the public would like to see it?
The budget?
Yes.
I assume it'll be part of the agenda.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, well, I know if we get it sent in to us in email, if it is.
It's out there with the legislation.
Okay.
Okay. Further questions? There you have that look on your face like Tom just said something didn't make any sense.
No, I understand it.
Okay.
Been around a while.
He just gave me that look. It's like, oh, maybe you need AMs. Wrong direction. Mitch, take us.
Got a couple of updates here, just to bring council up to speed. So we did have our third and final bid opening on the Rock Mill Corporate Park public improvements that we're doing out there as part of the whole Magna and South Central Power and all those things that are happening in the industrial park. We did receive one responsive bid. There were two bids. One of them was responsive. The construction prices are fairly high, and they've been trending higher as the economy is doing well. So I know that Mike Pettit is trying to work right now with the 629 folks at the state for some additional funds that we need to kind of, kind of keep things moving out there. But just wanted to keep everyone up to date. So we, so that was our third and final. We had the initial bid that went through Shelley Company, paved Anchor West. And that street name is actually changing to Magna. But, and then we had our second bid that was through Kelchner, and they did some other things on Dave Johns and Anchor East and some sewer work. And then this is the final bid, where we'll be doing the bid for the surfacing of all the streets, the final surfacing, and then creating a driveway for the Magna folks. So there's a little update on that, and we're trying to work through some of the costs on some of those bids. So that's one update. And then another one is, I don't know if you'll get any comments from several of the utility companies, but we have been meeting with multiple utility companies for the rollout of the right-of-way ordinance. We've had a couple of meetings already with a couple of TC Energy, South Central Power. We have some scheduled meeting next week with AEP. Just trying to meet individually with all of the outside utility companies, trying to just basically describe and give in detail how the process is going to work in terms of how the funding and fees and things are associated, as well as some of the intricate details and how the applications and whatnot are received at the city. So it's been going well. It's been well-received so far. Hoping to try to meet with most of the major players that work in the right-of-ways with us. And just wanted to update you guys. January 1st is the official full rollout, is when it will, the time clock will start. So at that time, if people aren't signed up with us, they will not be able to work in our right-of-way until they're signed up with us. So.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Nolan? Very good. Thank you, sir. Further updates? We'll see you none. I'll move over to President Wu for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, we'll note from a process standpoint, contemporary resolutions 128 and 129, as well as temporary ordinances 19 and 20, will be tabled in, right, Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Okay. So, and that's because of the annexation process and the fact this needs to go to the planning commission. So we'll place these on the table. Once the planning commission does their thing and it comes back to us, we'll remove those and the council will then take action. That's all I have to do.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And then the other items for finance. I had asked that Lindy Jackson, the president of the Hunter's Run Conservancy Board, to come speak with council. That means you have to get up and go to the podium.
I'll wait for you to get down.
Oh, you want the grand entrance. I apologize. To come talk about the, you know, he was here a couple of weeks ago to talk about the district, but talk about how and why you needed the money that was granted to you by the county and the city to do much, much-needed emergency work and other items in the district. So if you'll share that with us, and if anybody has any questions, I'd much rather this be interactive as opposed to him giving a speech.
Yeah, I would too.
All right.
Thanks for inviting me back. When I offered that, I didn't know I was, you'd take me up on it. I'm glad to be here. Because one of the big things we have to do with the Hunter's Run Conservancy District is educate the public. So good, bad, or indifferent, when we get a name out there, people come to understand what we are and what we do. And a couple of quick points about that is it's taken for granted. You know, there's a lot of building that's been done in the city. The FEMA floodplain map is based on those dams functioning properly and holding back the water. Hasn't been a recent study done on what it would be like if those dams did not exist, or if one of them breached. But that's something we do want to do in the future, is get that study done, to determine what work needs to be done in the future years. And also to have a better understanding of who is actually in the inundation zone if something did happen catastrophic, which we don't want to have happen. So there were two events that happened prior to me getting involved. One of them was the Rock Mill primary spillway. Was, the bottom port was plugged up, and every time it rained, it flooded Mountain Zion Road. That had been in the news over, in past years. There were people responsible that didn't know there was a port that was completely plugged up. And that became an EMA issue. They went out there in February, I think it was, or no, it was March timeframe. And actually had divers. They actually did an emergency exercise and dove down and found out what was plugging up the port and got that cleared out. It happened to be a baby crib mattress, and then with all the wood and everything up against it. So that was the first, that was one of the issues. The other issue was Dam 65, which is out on Rainbow Drive. Nobody probably even knows it's there. But it's upstream of River Valley Highlands. And that spillway had completely plugged, and the water was rising in that. It's a small structure, but just the same, you wouldn't want all that water coming down through that valley at one time. So that was the second thing that actually brought everything to light, that maintenance was being deferred, and there needed to be some attention placed on it. So then I got involved in April. And then out of that was the discussion about, you know, getting some money forwarded to us here this year so we could get some work done, so we could inspect these dams and see the conditions. So out of that, we came up with about $40,670. We actually had, we did the MOU. Originally, it was estimated at $37,240. And that was for mowing and cutting trees and brush and clearing it out. And again, there were small trees, various size, on those dams. You don't want trees on dams because they, the roots will, can rot and cause voids in the dam.
I think we learned that at Buckeye Lake, too, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah, kind of, yeah.
Very similar.
Little bit bigger, little bit bigger issue, thankfully. Right, right. So, and then that ended up getting revised to $40,670. And then Navco, which does spring, we were at $67,3670 for the first agreement. And that actually dropped to $66,110, because as we saw what work needed to be done. And we dropped off some seeding that we did ourselves. And then we had Fee Corp. There was a drain, a driveway drain. It was in, running through the emergency spillway on R-23, which is up off of Roethen Road. And that one, that one turned out, it was $3,000 estimate roughly, and it turned out to only be about $1,200. So we reduced that, which that's not showing in anything you have. That's a late development. So. And then the other thing we planned to do was, we've got a couple risers that were, the tops of them are failing, and there's some concern about the structural integrity of those. So we hired Hall and Associates to come out and do an assessment of those two and also recommend repairs. They're in good shape overall. It's just the tops of them are bad. And they're actually have lowered the level of the ponds a certain amount. Those are some of the smaller sediment structures. Nothing major. So then we had, we had proposed to rent a piece of equipment to help do some of this cleanup. We decided it was better spent with the professionals out there with TD Landscape. So that was $57,250. So we, we didn't use that money. So then we ended up, as we continued to assess everything, dam number six, which is a dry dam. It's up behind Tractor Supply on Memorial Drive. And that one, the sediment's filling up the spillway, and felt that that was important to get that cleaned out. So we transferred those dollars over to a contract, with a contractor to clean that out. So then we, we did a revised MOU then later this year to, just to true up those numbers. And same, spending the same amount total. So that's, that's what we used the money for. With those two incidents that happened early in the year, it was felt it was pretty important to get out there. And I'd also say those are, there's 15 hazard-class dams, which mean that they're classified by ODNR to have downstream, either, you know, property damage or loss of life. So that 14 dams that we did covered all but one of those. And it's not a really major one. We're going to be doing that one ourselves internally. So we got all, we got 14 of the 15 hazard-class dams cleaned up so that ODNR and NRCS could actually do dam inspections this year and see what the conditions were. Which fortunately, everything's in pretty good shape except for the trees and brush that was growing on the dams. So that's where we're at right now. We did not get the work done at number six yet. Hopefully, the weather will straighten up again here, and we can get up there and finish that up yet before the end of the month.
I do have a question for you. So you talk about all the things that you paid to have done. What, how much, how many labor hours for people on the board and others have been put into the maintenance of?
I don't like to keep track of that, because it depresses me, but. No, I'm just kidding. I don't know. We've never really tallied it up. I know, I know, I went out and helped on two of the dams. We did our, some of the work we did ourselves. And, you know, I've got, I've got 160 hours probably in this summer, I suppose, total. Because R-33 up off of Wilson Road, we did that one ourselves. We cut all the trees and cleaned it off. We did lose one of our employees, the part-timer, and.
That doesn't sound right.
What? Well, we lost, well, he quit.
He retired.
I think maybe there was more work that I had anticipated as well.
Still out there floating somewhere.
We lost him, yeah. So, yeah, and then, of course, I got to give credit to Soil Water for volunteering to let Jonathan Ferber actually spend a good quarter of his time out there this year, I think. He actually has his hours, and that was, that was, through the county. They also, they, they have oversight of that funding, so they agreed to let him help us out. So he's been providing a lot of, a lot of help for us. John Coches as well.
A thousand hours, maybe? Between all people that, you know, work 1,000 hours?
Oh, yeah, probably. Sure, sure.
That's, that's half of a resource.
Yeah.
Or that's a full resource for half a year.
Yeah. That's probably, that's probably overall about right with including everyone.
So, and then the other questions that I have, and then I'll open it up for others. But you have, I mean, you don't really, do you have an inbound revenue budget? Or do you have to go to the judge every time you need money?
You have to, you have to go every, every year. Because you're allowed by ORC, you can, you can collect 1% of the original cost of the improvements each year without, without court action. But the total project cost back in the 50s and 60s was 1.3 million. So that doesn't go very far, $13,000. So they've been, they've been going to the judge and asking for 5%, which is about $65,000. And this year, we put together a budget of about $195,000 for next year. So we went to the judge and asked him for 15% of the original investment. So we'll be collecting about $195 next year.
So that's been approved?
Yes.
And that gets levied upon the property owners in the district?
Only the, only the 2,600 that were originally identified, which they cannot find the original records of how, how those were decided. But it was businesses and residences that were in the inundation zone here in Lancaster, for the most part, because that was who benefited the most from, from this district. And the city, as I understand it, they pay $9,000. But I understand, and I don't know when it happened, but several years ago, that they actually negotiated their fee down, which would have reduced their income. The county, I think, pays roughly $30,000 right now. So next year, the city's going to be paying about $27,000, and the county will be paying upwards of $9,000, I think is the number. That might be a little high. So they're major contributors, and they're major beneficiaries of, of the Conservancy District.
Let me open up for questions here. Yes, Mr. Grau?
Let me just ask for, repeat there. You said the city, or excuse me, the county up to now has paid about $30,000 a year.
That's what it was.
And the city about $9,000 a year. And how much have the residents been paying?
The balance, 39,000, they're paying the balance between 39 and 65. So they're paying $26,000. And that's not everybody. That's only that 2,600 parcels that were identified originally. Those are the original from back in the 50s. So nothing's been, nothing's been done to update and change any of those numbers impact. I mean, the mall doesn't pay anything. You get down Memorial Drive, there's a lot of people that don't pay anything. So that's our next step. That brings me to the next step is this, during this next year, we're going to be, we're going to be petitioning the court to include the entire watershed upstream and downstream. And then, after that, we're trying to get some grant money from FEMA to start doing the engineering studies and to try to get an idea of what capital improvements need to be made on these dams. Because there's been changes in the dam regulations, and there's also been increased building downstream. So there have to be studies done to identify what the inundation zone is if something happens, if the dam went over top. And so there's changes to the emergency spillways that may need to be made and that sort of thing. So there's additional work that's going to have to be done over the years. So we want to get this spread out to as many parcels as we can to reduce the impact on any one individual here, or company, or government entity. So that's, that's our plan.
All right. Mrs. Bobbitt?
So Lindy, I'm so glad you're here this evening.
Well, thank you.
I was glad that you came a couple of weeks ago because we haven't heard about this in a long, long time.
Yeah.
Where does this fall? I mean, who does this fall under? Does it fall under the emergency management? Does it fall under, you keep on saying the judge? I mean, who, it seems like this should be on top of somebody's list.
That's the first thing I said when they asked me to be on this thing. I said, you mean, there's three directors that are appointed by the Conservancy judge, and we're a political subdivision, and we are it.
So.
There is no one else.
So, you know, so then you get up, so then you get on, and you're like, okay, let's get these things taken care of. So it's almost like.
Well, I got, I got asked to get on, to take care of these things.
Okay, but I mean, it's almost like.
It's one of my ideas.
Thanks for, thanks for the individual who asked, because I know Lindy's work. But I mean, it's, it's like we didn't, you know, were we asleep?
Well, just real quick, the.
I mean, and the one reason why I asked, because, you know, I mean, one of the reasons why I asked is because now we're taking 30 grand or whatever it is out of our budget. And, you know, Melody Bobbitt didn't know anything about this.
Yeah. You mean, well, that's a recent issue, but.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying.
Overall, if, if, if the, if the district had been planning for the future, you'd have been paying more $9,000 10, 15 years ago, probably.
Well, I probably said it.
But, you know, it just, it just, well, I mean, three volunteers, you know, and unless they have a personal interest, and it's not like a board where, or not like council where, you know, you've got a fully-paid administration that is planning all the work and coming in here and just asking for permission to do it, basically, or, you know, ordinances and transferring money. You know, this, this board was it. You know, this board was it, really. And there's an annual report that has to be done, and they got their information from the guys in the field, and everybody thought everything was okay, and things weren't being done.
It just kind of blows my mind. I mean, you're talking dams. I've seen movies like this before. You know, I mean, it just blows my mind that ODNR, or FEMA, or Emergency Management, somebody didn't, you know, this isn't top on their list. And now, you're blowing my mind that only 2,600 people have to pay for this.
Yeah, yeah.
What's fair about that?
I agree with you. That's why we want to fix that, if we can. But, what point you made there about the dams. ODNR does do inspections. You know, they've written, they had written dams up before. EMA has a hazard mitigation plan for every dam. And it's just that there's never been a real formal group of people that went out there and looked to see what the condition of these things were. The major ones, the major flood-retarding dams, were being maintained better than the smaller ones. I will say that. They didn't have any large trees. Let me think about that a minute. They didn't have any large trees growing on them, but they were starting. There was little saplings, so it was time, we had to get those off of there. So...
You know, as Tom points out, and as you point out, you know, maybe a thousand hours? And then, we're still talking volunteer people.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah. It's, you'd think that it would've been set up with some county, I would say county oversight, but, you know, there's not, other than the Conservancy Judge.
Let's work on that.
Yeah. Ohio Revised Code 6101, it's the same as every other Revised Code we have. They're old. Nobody ever updates them. You know, yeah, there's a lot of things ought to be different with that one, as far as I'm concerned, but...
All right.
Okay, thank you.
I feel Mr. Rule staring at the back of the chair. Yes, Mr. Woodard.
Are we still discussing this?
Yes.
Okay. Well, again, I think we need to praise Mr. Jackson and this new committee, because they are trying to get the thing done, and I appreciate that. But, I do have some concerns. And I think, you know, my concerns are more with our administration than with what's going there, and I think there are things that we need to be looking at. You know, this kind of almost looks like backroom sommeligans, as far as what's going on. You know, why was it taking four months for this to come before council? I knew about this back in June. I told several of you about, that it was coming. You know, why did we wait this long? And, you know, and according to what I was told, the original proposal was to be a $50,000 loan. And somewhere, it got changed to a $30,000 grant that we would just be funding. You know, who decided that? How do we justify donating $30,000 ratepayer money? Should, if we're gonna give it, should it come out of a general fund, or some other source? We have over millions of dollars worth of sewer projects that still have to be done. $30,000 in that budget is very minor, but it also can help take care of some things, and we shouldn't be drawing other money out of it. So, that bothers me tremendously. And at last council meeting, we were told the county commissioners had already paid the $30,000 to the Hunter's Run Conservancy District on behalf of us, and were waiting for us to reimburse them. Several weeks ago, I was told an agreement had been signed, that Lancaster would donate the $30,000. My real concern there is, why did this not come to council first? Why is our money being pledged, and saying that we will definitely come through with it, before council ever has anything to say about it? We've been telling our citizens we don't have enough funds for our needs, that our police and fire departments are operating at minimal levels of administration, but then we're going to give away money that the taxpayers have paid in. So, I do have some concerns, but not with Mr. Jackson, because I think they're trying, and I think they've got some good prospects there. That's my comments.
I'll offer the administration an opportunity to respond. You kept looking at me, I thought you swiveled your chair 90 degrees.
Your chair.
Mayor Shuster.
Well, Jerry, since you're on the Water, Water Pollution Control Committee, you are also aware that we spend money in those departments because of emergency situations like this, before council approves it, and then we come to council after approval, after the fact. You know, this comes from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. That money cannot be transferred to the general fund, or used for police and fire. The enterprise funds are freestanding, like little companies within the city. That includes gas, water, water pollution control, sanitation, and stormwater, and utilities collection. Their money stands alone, it can't be transferred to the general fund to fund police and fire. It came from Stormwater, because, you know, water causes floods, and this was a major issue that we considered to be an emergency, and we needed to take action. It takes, to come to council, weeks and sometimes months to get something done, and it needed to be done very quickly, so the Conservancy District could get on with their work. So, yep, we, no doubt, we should've come and asked, but we considered it a dire enough situation, that we thought we needed to act to prevent serious problems, flooding, dam bursting, or something that would have a major negative impact on the citizens of Lancaster.
And I agree with you, and I agree you had to act on, but that was four months ago, and it should've come to council long before now. And I kept waiting for the legislation. It finally did come through, Mr. Stotin, and I'm thankful it has. But, I have a problem with your response, because you had four months to get this to council, saying that it was an emergency back in June. Now, we're into November. That bothers me.
Well, it's here now. I don't know what else to say. I'm not sure what caused the delay in getting it here, but it's here now.
Mrs. Teener, I saw you this time, so you're next.
So, actually, I have all this, all the things that were signed, I see back in June. This was, it's actually to attest to what you had said about the places around, I guess it was the dam around Rainbow and whatnot. And that was signed, I will say, um, let's see, Mr. Jackson signed it on the 13th of June, as did Paul Martin. It looks like Mayor Schaeffler, and I can't read this other person's name, the president. I love that board, Fairfield, oh...
Carrie Brown.
No, I think it was the President of Commissioners, Dave Lovitz.
Oh, sorry. Can I read his name? That was the 18th. Okay, so I got that. Okay, that was then. And, so I did look for minutes. That's what I was reading, gonna read about it, and then that's when I discovered it had never been brought to the committee. So, I'm going through this, and then here's an addendum to the agreement, and I'm looking at R-42, and then there's R-46. Well, these, these are my old stomping grounds. I'm from Carroll and the Lythopoulos area, I ran around. This is like almost to Amanda Northern Road. This second amendment, this second amendment was also signed in October.
The only thing that second one did was reconcile the dollars to what, where it actually got spent. So, yes, those are some of the sediment retention dams upstream of the flood-retarding dams that protect Lancaster. It's all part of the system.
Well, I mean, this is like Betts Road.
Yeah, it's College View Acres.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. And that's quite a ways away. I just, did Bloom Township get asked, or Greenfield Township get asked to kick in money?
No, because the county was kicking in their side of it. But, again, that water all flows down into the Hocking and comes down here. It's...
So, the townships are, other than the individuals, like the townships themselves?
No, they weren't involved in this process. They've provided us some support out there, in-kind services and things, but nothing, they were never asked to pay any money.
And to Mr. Woodard, I also agree that, you know, it would've been nice to, you know, if we have monies we need to spend. I understand we have flooding on the west side, I understand all that. I understand they spent $40,000 to put in new switches, I got that. But, it wasn't until close to the election, though, for the income tax, that that was done, even though people have been complaining for years. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, further questions?
Again, the check valves that were put in came from the Stormwater Fund, which is not impacted by city income tax. No city income tax goes to any of the enterprise departments, according to the Ohio Revised Code. And the check valves that were put in, in the Hocking River, are very similar to preventing flooding as the repair on these dams.
Further questions? Very good. Thank you. Wendy, thank you for coming and sharing more information with us, we appreciate it.
Thank you, and I appreciate your support. I mean, this was a big undertaking for me and the new board to take on, and it was nice, it really was good to know that we had this money out there to get a good start on it, and to plan for the future, so I appreciate it.
And we really know that Sue basically told you to go find a hobby since you retired.
Well, no, actually, she wasn't, no, she had things I was supposed to be doing that I haven't got done yet.
Those weren't, by the way, signed.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Are there any other items for finance? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, ma'am.
Second. We are adjourned. It is 6:40, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at 6:45.
And like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects, whom I volunteer work, and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio, to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful, and just as important, that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848, for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. Due to the recent success of the new car market, there is a large inventory of used cars available for resale. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for. With over 15 years at this location, and 27 years' experience in the business, we are the best place to go to find your next car, truck, van, or SUV. As a member of the Better Business Bureau, we are a Carfax Advantage dealer, and offer great financing rates through a local area bank, with warranties available on most vehicles. We know your time is valuable, so we take special pride in making sure that you get what you came for, at a price that you can afford.
Come into the Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home in Cremonetory in Lancaster, and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore, have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster, and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Good evening, welcome to Lancaster City Council. Please join me in a word prayer. Sorry. Father, we thank you for this day and your blessings. Thank you for all that you've done. As we work our way through November, a natural time of Thanksgiving, we give you thanks. We also pause today and give you thanks for our veterans, those who have served so faithfully over the years and decades. Thank you for those who have served and come home, and asked that you would continue to be with them. We pray for the families of those who have not been so fortunate. But, we're thankful for each one, as they work to preserve, protect, and defend the very freedom that we enjoy here tonight. We're so thankful for your blessings, and ask that you would lead, guide, and direct us as we go about this work, in Jesus' name. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council a ward. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening. Reading, exposing, and the journal.
I'd like to present the meeting minutes dated October 28, 2019.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journals.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated October 29, 2019, regarding Hunter's Run Conservancy District, submitted by Mrs. Teener. Email dated October 30, 2019, regarding Hunter's Run Conservancy District, submitted by Mayor David Schaeffler. Email dated November 1, 2019, regarding third-quarter hotel-motel reports, submitted by Tax Commissioner Amy Hamilton. Email dated November 2, 2019, regarding the 2020 proposed budget, submitted by Mayor David Schaeffler. And finally, an email dated November 4, 2019, regarding the 2020 proposed budget, submitted by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There is one. Email dated November 1, 2019, regarding the annexation of Timbertop, submitted by Harold Blaisdell.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no special presentations or awards tonight. Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
During this time at City Council, we set time aside to allow the voters and taxpayers of Lancaster to address City Council on any item or issue they would like. If you're interested in addressing Lancaster City Council tonight, we ask that you would come forward to the podium, sign in with your name and address, and state the same for the record. Please note that while we may do so at a later time during this meeting, we will not respond to you during voter and taxpayer time. In addition, in accordance with the rules of City Council, we ask that you would keep your comments to five minutes or less. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Mrs. Burnside.
Good evening. My name is Diane Logan Burnside, and I reside on Quill Meadows Drive in Lancaster. Last City Council meeting I ended was stating that the HOC group telling the city that we were in financial woes, but then passing a resolution that offers up to 100% property tax abatement, which would generate revenue to the city. And I beg to differ that point from an email received by the mayor, as to how was the street levy passed, and why would the HOC group include it within one of their options to gain revenue? For up to 15 years, it's confusing to me, but as I continue to read about these and other ongoing issues, I'm beginning to feel like a bobblehead doll, shaking my head. Transit Department, bringing the employees that were... Transit Department, bringing the employees that were with Ride Right in-house to be Lancaster City employees versus the fact they were drivers for Ride Right, who made an offer to renew the contract that it was deemed too high. I've heard that the city was required to go out and get new bids, but I haven't heard who these other companies were nor their bids. Were there any other companies contacted at all, or just Ride Right? Ride, right, sorry. Because Ride Right submitted a bid of an hourly rate of $38 an hour to $45 an hour, an increase of $435,000 from the 2018 contract, was this increase due to added loops and extended hours? Curious, because I suspect that if you increased service calls, there would be a need for increased rates. When the city reported that they were taking full operation of the public transit effective January 1st, including all the bus drivers and several other LFPT staff members as city employees, are they currently right, as they are currently right, right, Ride Rights employees? And it was stated that the general fund over the last several years provided $73,000 to support the LFPT, which is the amount requested on the 2020 budget. Interesting that this is the base salary for the public, for the director of public transit, or are those earmarked for that salary? So I ask, isn't adding a new city department, drivers, dispatchers, a mechanic, as these positions never existed before, and there were at least forty employees involved, were these transferring employees from Ride Right brought through an application and interview format, since every city employee position should follow that type of protocol? If the city wasn't paying the $249,000 before because it was grant money, how is it saving the city money? Which brings me to a comment made by the director of the Transit Department in an interview to the UGZ, an ordinance to establish the starting wage at $13.02 an hour, and depending on how the vote for the new income tax increase in the city turns out, Woody said that rate could increase. I commented on this, and Cory responded that the income tax levy was not discussed. I copied and pasted to his comment, and he apologized, as he scanned past that part, but the starting rate would be 13.02, but he had no idea what the rest of the sentence meant. I've been told the majority to support the public transit comes from state and federal grants. If these grants go away, the public transit will no longer exist. How is this not a risk? You're just going to let go forty-plus employees, and what if they become unionized? Grants are not guaranteed. And I'm also curious about the $30,000 grant that the city is providing to Hunter Run Conserv- Conserv-, Conservatory District. I read the minutes from the wastewater committee, which are very detailed, and saw nothing about this discussed in any of them. But I understand temporary resolution that the funds that this money is being requested from is a grant from the city of Lancaster. Is that like the grants applied for, let's say, public transit, ones that don't get repaid? What is the situation? With the situation Lancaster is in financially, income tax increase on the ballot, and all we're giving away $30,000? And I understand that the water causes floods, and that you are in a dire situation, a dire situation that took four months to act on. Just looking for some clarification, even though I'm not eligible to pay income tax because I am retired, I was told even more reason to vote for it. Shake my head. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Thank you all for being here tonight. Other reports of standing committees?
There are two. Finance Committee meeting minutes for November 4, 2019 submitted by Mr. Stotin, and finally, Public Works Committee meeting minutes for October 11, 2019 submitted by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Other reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearing scheduled tonight, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 127-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund 834, complete a fund transfer, increase receipts and appropriations in the Cemetery Fund 207, and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 127-19.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 127-19. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover.
This is just fund-to-fund transfer in the cemetery for the cemetery department in finishing the new scatter garden, memorial garden at Forest Rose Cemetery.
Thank you very much, further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodridge?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 127-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 128-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a pre-annexation agreement covering 76.877 plus minus acres in Greenfield Township, offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Groff.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council place on the table Resolution 128-19.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to place on the table Temporary Resolution 128-19. As a privileged motion, this allows for no debate, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodridge?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 128-19 is placed upon the table.
Mr. President, I would like to note on that just one thing that I believe you stated earlier, this will be at the planning commission on, I believe it's November 14th, and there will be a public hearing at that point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Groff, will also, once it comes back before us, have a public hearing as well. Is the 14th the correct date? Yes, it is, thank you. Temporary Resolution 129-19.
A resolution indicating services to be provided by the municipal corporation to annex territory of the meth dock company's LPD annexation of 76.877 plus minus acres from Greenfield Township, offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Groff.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council place on the table Resolution 129-19.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to place upon the table Temporary Resolution 129-19. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodridge?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 129-19 is placed upon the table.
We now have second reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 131-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Water Fund 603 and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Woodridge, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Woodridge.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 131-19.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 131-19. Discussion, Mr. Woodridge.
Again, this is just in order to take care of the certificate appropriation with the county auditor.
Very good, further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodridge?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 131-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 132-19.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the General Fund 101 and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution Temporary 132-19. Discussion, Mr. Stotin. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This appropriation is to fund additional legal services related to personnel matters, arbitration, union negotiation, and BWC claims.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Stotin, further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodridge?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 132-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 133-19.
A resolution to create a new fund for hotel-motel tax 855 and set up revenue and expense accounts, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President, this will be the second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 133-19. Temporary Resolution 134-19.
A resolution to create a new fund for BWC processing 850 and to set up revenue and expense accounts, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President, this will be the second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 133-19. Temporary Resolution 134-19.
A resolution to create a new fund for BWC processing 850 and to set up revenue and expense accounts, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President, this will be the second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 134-19. Temporary Resolution 135-19.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an engineering contract, offered by Mr. Woodridge, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodridge.
Second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 135-19. Temporary Resolution 136-19.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for inspection services, offered by Mr. Woodridge, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Woodridge.
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 136-19. Now Temporary Resolution 137-19.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to award a contract for the 5th 6 Forest Rose Sewer Separation Project, offered by Mr. Woodridge, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodridge.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 137-19.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 137-19. Discussion, Mr. Woodridge.
Again, this is one of those where we're just trying to clean up some things, and this takes care of the Forest Rose Sewer Separation Project.
Thank you very much, further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodridge?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Woodridge.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 137-19. Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 137-19. Further discussion, Mr. Woodridge.
No further discussion.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodridge?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is the second of three readings, please. Second of three readings on Temporary Resolution 139-19. We now have first reading on Temporary Resolution 140-19.
A resolution to make appropriations for current 2020 budget expenses and other expenditures of the city of Lancaster, state of Ohio for the fiscal year 2020, and to establish line item transfer authority for departments, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is the city budget for 2020. Just a couple highlights real quick before I give it the first reading. Total budget is about $6 million less than it was in 2019. The general fund specifically is up about $1,006,000, of which, $1,004,000 of that is specific to police and fire, which is 70% of our general fund, and of that $1,004,000, $535,000 is in additional health insurance, the others are contracted raises and such. The remaining general fund increase is only $218,000, which is 2.5% compared to 2019. So, it's a lean budget. We'll get more information between now and the next meeting, we'll get a full, full clean budget along with compares on prior, prior years, and then all the pay ordinances will follow as well. So we've got three weeks of work to do, so while we're not meeting, though, work will still be going on with the budget, but this will be the first of three readings, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 140-19. Are there any further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Ordinance 17-19.
An ordinance to amend Ordinance 26-18, repeal and replace existing 26-18, and to declare an emergency for the management pay ordinance, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Ordinance Temporary 17-19.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 17-19. Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President, this ordinance is creating a part-time position in the community development area or department to basically allow job shadowing for the retirement of the executive director. So this will be a part-time Level 15 position.
Thank you, Mr. Stotin, further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodridge?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance 17-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Ordinance 18-19.
An ordinance to change the name of the street known as Anchor Avenue to Magna Avenue in the Rock Mill Corporate Park Phase 2, offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mr. Groff.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes, we spoke about this earlier, this is a renaming of Anchor Way to, or Anchor Avenue to Magna Avenue in recognition of the huge economic development boost it has provided to the city. I would, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Ordinance temporarily numbered 18-19.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 18-19. Further discussion, Mr. McDaniel.
Nothing further.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Groff.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance eighteen dash nineteen passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance nineteen dash nineteen.
An ordinance to accept a petition for the annexation of seventy-six point eight seven seven plus minus acres in Greenville Township and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Groff.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council place on the table temporary ordinance nineteen dash nineteen. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Groff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
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 Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council place on the table temporary ordinance twenty dash nineteen.
Temporary ordinance nineteen dash nineteen is placed upon the table by vote nine to zero. Temporary ordinance twenty dash nineteen.
An ordinance amending the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of seventy-six point eight seven seven plus minus acres in Greenville Township and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Groff.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council place on the table temporary ordinance twenty dash nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place upon the table temporary ordinance twenty dash nineteen. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Groff.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance twenty dash nineteen is placed upon the table by vote nine to zero. We now have second reading on temporary ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of revenue note in the aggregate principal amount of three hundred fifteen thousand thirty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents to reimburse Flagstar Bank FSB for a draw on a letter of credit in connection with the cost of improving Edie Road, Memorial Way, and Michael's Way by grading, widening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalk, traffic signals and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities together with all necessary pertinences thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen. Temporary ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of revenue notes in the aggregate principal amount of one million fifteen thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty-four cents to pay costs of improving Edie Road, Memorial Drive, and Michael's Way by grading, widening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalks, traffic signals and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities together with all necessary pertinences thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen. Temporary ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of revenue notes in the aggregate principal amount of one million fifteen thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty-four cents to pay costs of improving Edie Road, Memorial Drive, and Michael's Way by grading, widening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalks, traffic signals and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities together with all necessary pertinences thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen. Temporary ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of revenue notes in the aggregate principal amount of one million fifteen thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty-four cents to pay costs of improving Edie Road, Memorial Drive, and Michael's Way by grading, widening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalks, traffic signals and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities together with all necessary pertinences thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen. Temporary ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the, in the maximum principal amount of one million two hundred sixty thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of renovation of the existing building for use by the city's municipal court, together with all necessary pertinences thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen. Temporary ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen.
An ordinance to supersede a previous easement necessary for the construction of electric lines offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Groff.
Uh, this will be the second of three readings.
Actually, I have a.
Oh, you want to suspend it?
I'm going to suspend it, Mr. Groff, yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend the third reading of temporary ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen. Mr. Groff. Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen. Mr. Groff.
Uh, this will be the second of three readings, please.
Further discussion on the motion to suspend?
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Groff.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance twenty-nine nineteen is placed upon the table by vote nine to zero. We now have second reading on temporary ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of revenue note in the aggregate principal amount of three hundred fifteen thousand thirty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents to reimburse Flagstar Bank FSB for a draw on a letter of credit in connection with the cost of improving Edie Road, Memorial Way, and Michael's Way by grading, widening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalks, traffic signals and signs, and water sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities together with all necessary pertinences thereto and declaring an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen. Temporary ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen.
An ordinance to supersede a previous easement necessary for the construction of electric lines offered by Mr. Groff, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Groff.
Uh, this will be the second of three readings.
Actually, I have a.
Oh, you want to suspend it?
I'm going to suspend it, Mr. Groff, yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend the third reading of temporary ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to suspend the third reading of temporary ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen. Mr. Groff.
Uh, yes, this is the, uh, for South Central Power, uh, a new easement to replace a previous easement, uh, due to some planned development.
Thank you, Mr. Groff. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Groff.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Groff.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council, uh, pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance twenty-four nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Groff.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen.
An ordinance to amend and replace Lancaster Codified Ordinance Part One Administrative Code Title Nine Taxation, Chapter One Eighty-Three, Section One Eighty-Three Point Zero Three Definitions of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lancaster and to repeal existing Part One Administrative Code Title Nine Taxation, Chapter One Eighty-Three, Section One Eighty-Three Point Zero Three Definitions and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen. We have no ordinances for first reading. Are there further ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we do have temporary ordinance eleven dash nineteen that remains upon the table when we settle into after tomorrow's election. Is there any unfinished business this evening? Is there any new business this evening? Mrs. Teener.
Oh, I, maybe I should have done this under, um, business. Uh, I was, wanted to comment about this Lancaster Transit article that was in the paper, um, November second. Uh, one part of this does, a couple of sentences kind of does, uh, bother me a bit. It says, "An ordinance to establish the starting rate, uh, pay rates for the drivers is set to go before Lancaster Council November fourth. The proposed starting wage is thirteen oh-two an hour, and depending on how the vote for the new income tax increase in the city turns out, Woody said that rate could increase." Now, our conversations have been that this is supposed to be grant funded except for her salary. Now, has something changed that I don't know about because every conversation we've had on this is supposed to be grant funded? Would somebody like to answer this?
The Fairfield Public Transit System is funded fifty-seven percent by grants, state and federal grants. The city has for many years contributed seventy-three thousand dollars, which is going to be the contribution for, uh, two thousand and twenty. However, one of the priorities that we have established for the income tax increase, should it pass, is an additional hundred thousand dollars for Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit, which is to be used for local match. The amount of state and federal grants that we can receive is limited by our local match. And in order to expand services to more members of the community, uh, the hundred thousand would be used to apply for additional state and federal grants. I am not aware that the salaries paid to the drivers will change whether the state and, or the city income tax passes or not.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I see other hands going up. Is this on the same issue before we move on?
It sure is.
Well, Mrs. Bobbitt, what can we do for you?
Well, uh, first off, I want to, the public to know that Public Works had many meetings in regards to transit. I don't believe there's any one of us around this table that is thrilled about taking on new employees. However, in every one of these meetings, um, as it, as it was unfolded to us, um, transit sent out bids. We only received one bid. That bid came in two hundred, correct me if I'm wrong, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than what we've paid before. So, we're sitting around the table, we don't have the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We can defunct transit right now, or we can take these employees in-house. As I said, I'm not thrilled about taking any employee in-house. However, this is our transit department. It is a department that many people in this city rely upon. You might have a vehicle to drive. There's other people in this city who do not have a vehicle to drive. I'm, I don't understand the comment that was in the newspaper. Uh, we've talked around the table, had many talks with Tom. We, we've had seventy-three thousand in the budget. That's what's going to be in this budget for the next year. Um, we've talked about layoffs. We all know that this is funded by grants. If the grants go away, transit goes away. These employees could become union employees. Same thing. If, if the, if the grants go away, that's the time when transit goes away. We were asked for the seventy-three thousand dollars. The budget checked it, seventy-three thousand dollars in there. This is not going to cost the citizens of Lancaster any more funds, and you're still going to have your transit department. I was trying to take notes, like I said, there's not any one of us around this table that's taking this lightly. The employees were paid nine dollars and fifty cents an hour by Ride Right. Obviously, if they gave us this bid, we were in a meeting with them. We, we, we tried to ask them, you know, why, why are you raising it, uh, this much money? I, my gut feeling is they really did not want to work here in Lancaster any longer. I don't know if there's not enough money in it for them. Um, if, if we couldn't get another company to bid on it, then, you know, you know, to, to get your answer from that, um, all the cities around us, um, have their own municipally owned transit. Um, I, I just don't like it, um, I don't like it referred to that we're rubber stamping this. Uh, Carrie Woody probably, um, I don't know, maybe she can't stand me right now because as many questions that I gave to her, as many questions that I gave to Paul, as many questions that I gave to the mayor, not a one of us are taking this lightly. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more if we would have stayed with Ride Right. We don't have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. I don't know how much more I can say that, um, you know, this is what we're faced with. We either have a transit department or we don't have a transit department.
Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this specific issue before we move it around? I saw Mr. Woodard next, then Mr. Groff, then Mr. Schoonover.
Just a, a clarification now. You're telling us the budget next year will be seventy-three thousand. The mayor's telling us it'll be a hundred thousand if the levy passes tomorrow, uh, or the tax issue passes tomorrow. So, is it going to be a hundred thousand if it passes, or is it going to be a hundred and seventy-three thousand if it passes? Just one clarification.
Mr. Mayor.
A hundred and seventy-three thousand if it passes.
Okay, so there's the clarification.
Okay, we, we were told in this chamber that it was going to be seventy-three thousand dollars.
That's what I thought.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, and we have laid out a number of priorities for the city if the city income tax passes, including a fourth medic, which is going to cost one point three million dollars. Additional, four additional police officers and two comtechs, which is going to cost eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, a sidewalk program to repair our very needy sidewalks, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Additional funding for Fairfield Public Transit so we can up our request for state and federal funds, a hundred thousand dollars. And there's one other one which I'm not recalling right now.
Engineer.
Oh, and an additional engineer because, uh, our engineering department is buried with work and, uh, we desperately need another engineer. In addition to that, we are out of compliance on our bond covenants. We're required to keep twenty-five percent of our general fund expenses and carryover at the end of the year, which is approximately six point two-five million dollars. At the end of eighteen, we carried over three point eight million dollars. We need to replenish the carryover at the end of the year.
But my, but my only comment would be, we approve the budget.
Okay. Agreed.
Correct.
Okay, I do see some other folks. I saw Mr. Groff next.
Uh, yes, just based on what Mrs. Bobbitt said, I had a question from, uh, her response, and she was saying other communities around Lancaster have transits and have drivers in house. Do those other communities also have their transits running countywide? And why is the county not participating more in this since?
It is running throughout the county.
I'll, I'll go ahead.
Has that ever been discussed on that?
It, it sure has. And, and I have the same, I have the same question that you have.
I, I just don't like it, um, I don't like it referred to that we're rubber stamping this. Carrie Woody probably, um, I don't know, maybe she can't stand me right now because as many questions that I gave to her, as many questions that I gave to Paul, as many questions that I gave to the mayor, not a one of us are taking this lightly. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more if we would have stayed with Ride Right. We don't have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. I don't know how much more I can say that, um, you know, this is what we're faced with. We either have a Transit Department or we don't have a Transit Department.
Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this specific issue before we move it around? I saw Mr. Woodard next, then Mr. Groff, then Mr. Schoonover.
Just a clarification now. You're telling us the budget next year will be seventy-three thousand. The mayor's telling us it'll be a hundred thousand if the levy passes tomorrow, uh, or the tax issue passes tomorrow. So, is it going to be a hundred thousand if it passes, or is it going to be a hundred and seventy-three thousand if it passes? Just one clarification.
Mr. Mayor?
A hundred and seventy-three thousand if it passes.
So, there's the clarification.
Okay, we, we were told in this chamber that it was going to be seventy-three thousand dollars.
That's what I thought.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, and we have laid out a number of priorities for the city if the city income tax passes, including a fourth medic, which is going to cost one point three million dollars. Additional, four additional police officers and two comtechs, which is going to cost eight hundred thousand dollars. A sidewalk program to repair our very needy sidewalks, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Additional funding for Fairfield Public Transit so we can up our request for state and federal funds, a hundred thousand dollars. And there's one other one which I'm not recalling right now. Oh, and an additional engineer because, uh, our engineering department is buried with work, and, uh, we desperately need another engineer. In addition to that, we are out of compliance on our bond covenants. We're required to keep twenty-five percent of our general fund expenses and carryover at the end of the year, which is approximately six point two five million dollars. At the end of eighteen, we carried over three point eight million dollars. We need to replenish the carryover at the end of the year.
But my, but my only comment would be, we approve the budget.
I agree.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, I do see some other folks. I saw Mr. Groff next.
Yes, just based on what Mrs. Bobbitt said. I had a question from, uh, her response, and she was saying other communities around Lancaster have Transits and have drivers in-house. Do those other communities also have their Transits running countywide? And why is the county not participating more in this since it is running throughout the county?
I'll, I'll go ahead.
Has that ever been discussed on that?
It, it sure has. And, and I have the same, I have the same question that you have. I mean, um, and, and I know in one of our meetings, Carrie Woody was very forthcoming and told us, um, we, we are in other parts of the county. You've allowed us to do that. I'm not so certain, sitting here today, that this shouldn't be a county-wide program. She said that.
And again, the other communities, are they running throughout the county?
Some are, some are. I'm not saying that, you know, Lancaster has to do what another community does. I'm just saying that, you know, as a committee, this is what was thrown in our laps. You know, you, we, we had no idea that Ride Right was going to hand to us a bid that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. So, you're faced with shut it down, stop it now, or do what we can do.
Thank you, Mrs. Bobbitt. I, I'm going to come to Mr. Schoonover, then Becky, then Norman, well, actually, we'll reverse if you're spoken on this, and then back to Becky, if no one else. But, Mr. Mayor, we'll give you a chance to respond before we move on. Does that mean I'm an actual?
Didn't hear what you said.
Mr. Mayor?
So, so, by the way, the county does participate in funding public transit, along with many other organizations like Meals on Wheels, which gets a county levy. They contribute every year. Fairfield DD, uh, many other organizations and, uh, government entities in Fairfield County participate. Also, our grant funding is based on the services we provide, which includes services out into the county.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schoonover? I, just to echo some of what Melody said, and, you know, I think it was probably early spring, uh, beginning of the summer that, I, Carrie Woody came to me as the Chair of Public Works and said, okay, we got one bid back. This is how much more it is. Do you think council will agree to give more local match from the general fund? And my answer was no. So, what's, what's the alternative going to be? So, the alternative was, okay, here's what our budget will look like if we brought it in-house. I mean, we've, we had our normal Public Works meetings about it. We had a special meeting about it. I think, um, you know, when you're talking about other communities, uh, we, we asked Carrie to make a field trip to Licken County. Licken County brought their Transit in-house a couple of years ago, so we kind of wanted to see, okay, what are the pitfalls going to be? You know, where can we make sure that we don't screw up? I, I think a lot went into it. It's kind of blown up into something I think is more than it needs to blow up into. It was, it was pretty simple from our perspective. You know, obviously, we had a lot of questions, and we didn't want to do it, but either have Transit or don't have Transit. Was really the, what it boiled down to. And, um, we know if it, if grants go away, it's going to go away. But you look at the state budget and what they've laid out for additional monies for Transit. You know, our local match, um, Transit go, does very well getting those match dollars from the city of Pickerington. I mean, we have a Pickerington loop, and the city of Pickerington pays into that. So, I, I, that department does more to make their budget go further than a lot of the departments that I see. And maybe I'm just being biased because we sit in those meetings, um, and really listen to that stuff. But there really aren't any smoke and mirrors with this, I mean, conspiracy theorists about. It's just, it's pretty simple, cut and dry. And there are some potential, yeah, what-ifs, but we, we got to roll with those and, and hope that it works out.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Mr. Hall?
Yes, um, Mr. Schoonover actually answered part of my question, uh, which basically was, uh, what degree is the city of Lancaster subsidizing services for the remainder of the county? It sounds like, given the fact that most of this is grant funded, um, and that we have other cities participating in producing match, that probably not much. But as we head into next year, if the levy passes and we allocate another hundred thousand dollars, then, um, I think we need to reevaluate the degree to which those out-of-county services, um, are maybe not being subsidized, or are being subsidized by our funds versus some of the, uh, the grant funding and other match that's being produced.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Mayor?
Just to let you know on employees, uh, it is not a guarantee that they're coming over. We're going to be posting all the positions out to the public. We're going to be conducting interviews, and we will be looking at those like we do anybody we hire over the city. Consider them. It's not a guarantee that they're going to get that job. They're going to be, um, going through that process as well.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken on this side issue or item that would like to? Anyone at all? Is there anyone who would like to? Mr. Stoughton?
I'm the only one left. Okay, so, yes, seventy-three thousand dollars is in, in the budget for this year. The proposal that the mayor had made, which he just laid out again, absolutely spoke of public transit. It's not a surprise. The other, the other problem that we had with public transit was keeping drivers or getting drivers because they were underpaid. All right? And because of the service that it is providing for those that are using the service, and it is heavily subsidized. So, you know, I think someone was asked about the Pickerington loop. I assume, I assume that that's all covered, uh, in a way, and, and the amazing job that Carrie's done with this is, is just been phenomenal to ensure that she's basically getting funded for all the things that she is doing. Back to Melody's point, I was not a fan of this. I'm not a, I'm not a fan of internal feepdom building, uh, internal to the city. I mean, someone brought it up about labor unions, I heard potential unemployment. All those things are risks, uh, for this process. However, um, at no, to Cory's point, there's no conspiracy here. This is absolutely what Mayor Scheffler talked about when he made the proposal for the tax increase. Specific was public transit and the other programs in which, which he talked about. And then the other thing that, and Mrs. Bobbitt knows this very well because she was the first one to approach me about taking this internal. And I said, no, no, and probably the HE double hockey stick, no. And, uh, to the point where, uh, well, then, public transit could go away. It's significantly cheaper. And my only point was, is we're not spending one more dollar of, of general fund money than what we've talked about. And if we get to the point where we lose grant funding, then they got to start cutting back on services and routes and people as, as appropriate. So, um, I've been sitting in this chair too long to the point where we talked about getting rid of public transit the first time, and that was a long, long, long time ago. And there was, uh, you know, Dyke Andrews sat, sat right over there and, uh, was adamant that we weren't going to make that go away, and he was absolutely right. You know, sometimes we have to look beyond, uh, the numbers to realize the benefits of what we're getting. And for what we're getting, whether it's seventy-three grand or a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, the service we get is incrementally much more benefit than what we're talking about, either one of those numbers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. And just to, to add on to that, just briefly, I, I remember Ms. Woody saying when she was here previously that public transit in Ohio is designed to be subsidized.
Yep.
It's the way that it is. And so, the fact that it's heavily subsidized is, is intentional. It's a, it's a vital service across our community as we think of the elderly, the disabled, those who don't have vehicles, as Ms. Bobbitt pointed out. They, they need to get to the grocery store, they need to get to the doctor, they need to get to, um, other places, and, and so vitally important. And whether it's seventy-three thousand or when the levy passes tomorrow, it's a hundred and seventy-three thousand, it's still less than if it were Ride Right, uh, and we had moved forward with that contract, um, that was, that was offered to us. So, with that, also ask if there's anyone left who would like to say something? We're going to go to Mr. Woodard, sir.
Just a comment on Mr. Hall's, uh, comment. One of the things I think you'll find out if you talk to Carrie is that one of the reasons that we have done so well in getting grants and outside funding is because we are countywide, that we can show that, that we're representing a large area, and that helps to bring in those funds. So, yes, maybe some money is spent that is not necessarily paid for by that community, but the grant that we're getting is probably paying for because we're getting that grant because we're countywide. So, that is, that is an important factor on a lot of our grants, not all of them.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Woodard. Mr. Schoonover?
Just to follow on Jerry's points, I don't have Transit's budget in front of me, but if we're using round numbers, I mean, their budget, roughly two million dollars a year. It's eighty-twenty, twenty percent local match, which is roughly four hundred thousand dollars a year. And we, the general fund for the city puts in the seventy-three, let's call it seventy, it's seventeen and a half percent. So, all of those other entities that put forth towards that local match is huge. And to be able to continue the service as it is with the same dollars, and, and, and if we have an opportunity to expand it, that's, that's what we want. We've talked in Public Works about, you know, can it be eventually go, you know, leave the city's hands and, and become a, a county agency? That's, that's probably the way that it could go, maybe it should go. But right now, I think we're doing the best to, to move it forward in, in, in hopes that something like that happens.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Anyone else before we get to the last word over there? Please.
I hope it's a quick word. In the last five years, ridership on public transit has increased from, I believe, slightly less than sixty thousand to about a hundred and twenty thousand. So, we're providing a great service to the citizens of Lancaster and Fairfield County. I would also like to point out that we have a very competent public transit director in Carrie Woody. She's been here for a number of years and has overseen a growth. She is also president of the Ohio Public Transit Association, finishing her third and final term because she's term limited. And that organization includes Cota in Columbus, the Cleveland Transit, Cincinnati Transit, Toledo, Dayton, Youngstown, all the biggies, in addition to the rural transit authorities like we have. And she is a very well-respected expert on public transit in the state of Ohio, and she didn't take this lightly.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, anything else on this topic before we move on? Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you. The Transit budget is, uh, almost two point four million dollars for twenty nineteen. So, that's about, that seventy-three thousand is about three percent of the Transit budget.
Very good. All right. Anyone else? A robust discussion. Thank you all very much. Further new business this evening? Anyone else have new business on another topic? Well, then, let me just mention as we prepare to wrap up that it is election day tomorrow. As many of you, I'm sure, know, some of you perhaps have already voted. If you haven't, please go, uh, out and vote tomorrow. We have a mayoral race, we have an at-large council race, and of course, uh, the tax issue on the ballot. So, please get out and vote tomorrow and exercise your rights, uh, as citizens. Further new business before we close? All right, then, we'll ask the clerk, please, read our upcoming news.
Next regular session, council. We have two scheduled, November twenty-fifth, the one following December sixteenth, both at six-thirty here in council chamber. Upcoming oath of office Monday, December thirtieth at six P.M. at Olive Dale Senior Citizen Center. Upcoming committee meetings for the next thirty days. Service November eighth at seven-thirty A.M. at the Gas Department Conference Room. Is that correct?
It's not really.
Where is it at then? I'm sorry?
It's going to be at Sanitation.
Sanitation.
I have to.
I apologize. My ask. Safety, November thirteenth at seven-thirty A.M. at City Hall, eighteen ninety-seven room. The economic development meeting for November fourteenth is hereby canceled. Water water pollution control, November twentieth at seven A.M. at the Water Pollution Control Conference Room. And finally, finance committee, November twenty-fifth, six P.M. here in council chambers.
Thank you very much. I'll just also quickly note that per the rules of council, once the election is done and we move toward the next term, that not later than January fifth, this council must convene to appoint President Pro Tem, who will then go about the work of putting committees together and recommending those to Lancaster City Council. So, please, sometime between the second and fifth, uh, those of you who are successful in the election tomorrow, prepare to, uh, be here for a meeting that will be scheduled in the next, in the next meeting or so. Are there any bills this evening?
There are none to be presented.
Is there a need for an executive session? If not, motion to adjourn is in order?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
A motion to second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If they say same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.